To Gifts to Schools. So again, I'm going to read all the Gifts to Schools. We'll do one motion. Braintree High School Gifts to Schools totaling $3,300. One check in the amount of $100, BHS Varsity Boy Soccer, and one check in the amount of $3,200 from TD Bank for the BHS Rugby Team. A State Textiles Gifts to Schools $314, five checks in the amount of totaling $314. South Middle School Gifts to Schools totaling $5,740, one deposit in the amount of $3,440 for the SMS Ski Trip, two deposits totaling $2,300 for the SMS Washington DC Trip. East Middle School Gifts to Schools $8,985.80, one deposit totaling $8,985.50. Funds were collected from the ski trip, $2,757, Cougar Cares, $1,430, Yearbook, $273.80, and Theater Guild, $4,525.
Who to accept, Madam Chair?
I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on. Trip approval. Back to you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much. We have in your packet a proposal from East Middle School. Mr. Shan is here to answer any questions. This is a trip to Canterbury Lake Park, really focused on the science behind a lot of the rides at Canterbury, the physics that are involved. You can see the details. This is a June 15th trip with a rain date of Friday, June 16th. Again, breaks down $29 students, the chaperones for every 10 students. But it's a relatively new trip compared to some that you've seen already this year. So I don't know if anybody had any questions, but certainly Mr. Shan can help answer any you might have.
Any questions from the committee? So it's all eighth graders?
Yes. Yep. This is, we're kind of...
I'm coming up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
It's been a long day.
We are, we are coming back from COVID and kind of getting back into some normalcy of field trips and fun and all the things we've missed out on for the last few years. So this Canterbury Lake Park trip for eighth graders is kind of bundled into our eighth grade activities for the end of the year. So really excited about getting back there. It's not that new. We've done this before. We have, our science teachers have focused physics and the science behind the rides and such. So excited to get back there. So we hope you'll prefer.
So it's educational too, yeah?
Absolutely. I love it. Absolutely.
It's just fun.
Physics is fun. Exactly. Okay. I mean, it was very self-explanatory in the packet that we received. So you have a rain date, chaperones, the bus and that, so.
And we do have funds available to offset the cost for students who may not be able to afford it. So we have that in mind as well.
If there aren't any questions, you certainly can.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, or to do for the field trip for eighth grade seconds.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemary and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Great time.
Thank you, Sam.
Here for the hand. Moving on to superintendent staff. Update on our town facilities.
So this evening, we have representatives from the DPW and the Facilities Department of the Town. As you know, we've been working in the evolution of the consolidation between the Town's Facilities Department and the School Department. So this evening, we have Mr. McGordy, Rob DeVito, Jim Arsenal, and Justin Zahn, who are here to kind of give an update on what they've been able to accomplish, where we stand in the process of consolidation, and any other tidbits they'd like to share. Turn it over to you gentlemen.
Those binders for us?
Yeah, yes. If I can pass them up.
Handouts. I like it.
Thank you. Don't I pass them around? You don't have any? I have a few more in my box. There's not enough there.
We can share.
Is there anything?
I want to.
Oh, you have another one.
Oh, you have an extra?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I think, I think we all have one.
I think everybody gets a towel. Does everybody have one?
Yeah.
Very good.
Great.
I'm sorry.
Are you ready?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Members of the school board, first, I would like to thank Superintendent Lee, his staff, especially the principals, who have been very supportive of us coming into their buildings, working with them every day. And it's made the job, the tasks that we do each day, a lot easier. And so, game together, as we all know, on the July 1st, we moved a mobile school building itself over to the Flaherty School. It sits until we get a new permanent home for it. So we jumped right in from the minute they said. Now one department, and it's been nonstop. It has been anything but dull. We've done roughly 140 work orders we've completed. There's 19 still outstanding. Most of them are related to roofwork. It will be repaired when the roofs are done this summer. So we've done some temporary patching on those, but that stands where it is right now. We've done, we would have liked to have done a little more assessment of the buildings, but we're in there every day. We know what we're looking at. We know what we're dealing with. We've done a couple of major projects that kept the schools running. We replaced two separate steam mains, one at the Highland School that was outside. And I know the children didn't appreciate it because they used to stand on the pipe and keep them all went along and watched the water boil up between the cracks. So we had to take that one away. It was dangerous. We did the steam main that supplied about one-third of the Hollis School. We had to abandon the existing lines. We put in a new steam line through the kitchen cafeteria to the back portion of the building to the gym. Big job in the winter. Kept the buildings open, days down. So it was, it was a difficult job. Great job with Tim over there, Donald, the principal, worked with us very cooperative because it was a difficult situation for us. We pushed through, kept the school up, and completed that. We also replaced the domestic hot water heating system at the high school, which was original. Fifty percent of it was shut down. The other 50% was going to break at any moment. There were no valves. They rotted off. You could not drain them. We had to drill a hole in the tank to drain the water out. It was 1,600 gallons of water. So it was a huge tank. It would barely fit in this room, and there was two of them. So we've replaced that with on-demand direct hot water heating systems tied into our existing heating systems so that we didn't have a larger fees to pay. We were able to do the work at 25 cents on the dollar. It was roughly $380,000 job. We did it for about 90 in-house, most of the work. So we're very proud to see that that was a problem that was on the horizon, and we avoided that. And I want to thank Mayor Kacoris, who green-lighted the emergency repair authorization for us and helped us come up with the funds to pay for the work. So what we were able to accomplish, small group, was a phenomenal job that they've done so far. We're there every day, getting better, looking to put on a few new people with the new budget. It's not everyone we wanted, but you know, budgets are what they are, and we have to live with them like everybody else, which is not the worst thing because if you grow slower, you can find the right people that will fit within your organization. And that's headed, and that's what we're doing. You can see the handouts that DeVito put together here in our department. And if you have any questions, to answer them or go over them if you'd like.
Everyone flipping through, I can just briefly go through. The first page just shows the breakout of custodian and maintenance departments. So there's a number one custodians within all 10 schools. If you look at the chart, there's between two to three custodians per elementary school. There are three custodians in South Middle, six custodians at East and a half at the high school. Obviously, we'd like more custodians to each school to keep them cleaner. But again, like Mike McGurty said, we have to live with the budgets we have. We have five maintenance people, two movers, two craftsmen, and one electrician. And those are the people that were in charge of keeping the facilities of the schools intact. So us, the Town Facilities Group, taking it up. Fifteen people on the town side, the laborers, the electricians, and two, one director of facilities, one, the facilities, Tristan Zahn, who don't sit at that desk very often. They're out in the middle doing actual work. I'm the only person that doesn't really do real work. I sit at my desk, look at a computer, and look at numbers all day, so.
Another beautiful presentation.
I really don't do much, but those other people do a lot of work. So the 10 schools plus four plus all the schools in town, they're responsible for maintenance. Breakout of the school facilities budget. Custodial labor, as you can see, salary overtime, et cetera, represents about 51% of the total budget for that group. Maintenance stake represents about 10%. Utilities and fuel, which represents gasoline, electricity, natural gas, water, and sewer represents about 28%. Natural repairs of the building represents about 11% of the budget. And 11% is building repairs, custodial supplies, test control, plumbing supplies, et cetera. So it's not a lot of money devoted to the actual upkeep of the buildings, unfortunately, which again, we have to live with the constraints of the budgets we have. The next page just showed the budget over the last few years. So I'm the finance man, and I just inherited this budget last fall. I notice from FY21 to currently, the budgets have been decreasing over the last couple of years. Again, you know, everyone has to live with tightening their belts. So school department is no different. But it is challenging, you know? If there was more money available, more things could get done. But you know, everyone has to live with what they're given. The next page just shows the breakout of the three programs. So it's custodial, maintenance, and fuel. For FY22, which is the last full complete year that we have, the custodial program came in a little under budget. The maintenance department came in a little over budget by $351,000. And utilities and fuel represents the biggest portion of the portion over budget, which is about $522,000. And that represents $838,000 over budget in FY22, which is about 17%. So just taking it to the next page, looking at the school. The budget for that group has remained flatlined, which is as far back as I can go in the system. Fuel costs, water and sewer costs have been going up year over year. The budgets have remained the same. It's challenging. So this year, we're projected to be over budget in that group, $680,000. Again, fuel costs keep going up, the budget remains the same. So again, it's very challenging. So the next few pages just kind of represents what Mike told you about all the schools. So starting in October, when we... There are approximately 424 work orders. And I say approximately because a lot of those come through the building maintenance system that we have, but a lot of them come through texts and phone calls and chats with Mike and Justin directly that don't necessarily go through the system. Principal called Mike and said, hey, we have a clogged toilet. Can you come fix it? They're not going to take the time to go through the building maintenance system at that point because the toilet might be overflowing. So we need to get someone out there right away. So many of the work orders come through the system, not all of them though. And this breakout, just to the number per school, with the high school being the biggest school, obviously they have the most work orders. And you can see all the numbers for all the schools. The next shot shows the category of those. There are already a couple of concrete tree related, with about half of the, more than half of the work orders going to concrete tree. A little over 100 of the work orders go to electrical and about 40 on the rest. So that's kind of the breakout of what these people are doing on a daily basis for the schools. The next number of pages, we can go through page by page. Page for the high school hot water here, that's my case. On the verge of failure. So these pictures represent the before of the hot water system. It might be hard to make out, but that third picture looks like this barnacle is growing on it. That's the valve to shut up the tank, which is why it was challenging to replace that in the middle of a school year. And if that valve blew, maybe hot water, just similar to your house, if the hot water heater blows in your basement, and it's down in the basement, basement's flooded. But these are very large tanks. The high school would not be without, would be without hot water if these things blew. The after picture, now it's operational.
Those giant hot water heaters.
That's correct.
Looks like regular sized hot water heaters. I'm sure they're larger. The pitch is probably misleading, but.
125 gallon tanks each, and they will produce 140 degree water at 12.5 gallons per unit. So it's 24, 25 gallons per minute indefinitely. So we don't use the locker room showers like they used to. So the demand has fallen off, and this is, we'll then cover the needs of the school.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, of course.
And the other thing, I remember in 2020, when I looked at the floor and everything, this was one of the things that I noticed. And, and I was hoping we could have got it done in 2020. But one of the other things too is our boiler system is off to the side over here. And so as you approach these, past the boilers, the heating system, that's what, five heating units?
Correct.
So those units, if we had a failure, you know, in the middle of the night, we could have had, those units could have been destroyed, damaged, whatever. And those are fairly new units. So that was another concern that it didn't emerge.
There's a good chance that would have happened.
Thank you. That looks nice.
So flipping the next picture of the high school. I'm not going to read all these. But there's a lot of work being done at all the schools. And again, I just want to point out, it's months worth of work. We weren't able to get into the school. Say we, the staff were able to get into the schools in October of last year. So this is six months worth of work. As you keep flipping, the rear door was renovated, painting and so forth. It's the whole school, and Mike, you could probably talk better than I can about this, about the location of mobile classrooms.
Right. That, that was the first day we took over. Had to get the classrooms off of the site and moved across town. It's kind of challenging when you haven't actually had to bring a crane in and move a building. But we got the job done with the help of the Braintree Police Department, gave us a quick escort across town. We had a good crane operator and some riggers to move the equipment for us. And we got it taken care of, and eventually we will get them up and operational and tied into the Flaherty School at some point in the next year. And we'll see how the schedule gets us through it. The photograph, the gymnasium floor, this is some of the things that we've been able to do. We've, we had the equipment. The schools had the equipment. We were able to strip the floors and refinish them. We've only done it in the elementary schools. We still sub out the high school, East Junior High, because they're larger. They're newer floors. So you really need to bring in an organization that has larger equipment and is prepared to do that. And again, this is our first out of the gate, so we want to be careful. We were able to do South Junior High in the elementary schools in-house, and we will continue to do that, get some savings by doing this work in-house. But the people, but the talent, we can do the work. We've also been able to get the carpet cleaning equipment. We go, instead of, they used to send all the carpets out or bring a company in to do them. Equipment, it was in-house. So we've refurbished it. We've brought in a couple of new pieces, and we do all the carpet cleaning in-house. And I think as we go further down, you'll see we did, you've got the Highlands School here as well. Also, the Highlands, they'll show you a picture of the underground steam pipes. That's the actual condition of the pipe when we dug it up.
Pipe is supposed to contain steam, not have steam escaping. You can't tell those are large holes in the pipe.
Yeah.
Steam was escaping. Paul's school had a new dishwasher installed. Also, steam piping repair is possible.
Did that. The steam piping comes up into the kitchen and through it, abandoned underground. That was a unique situation. I had never seen anything quite like that. It was actually boiling up through the concrete floor in the kitchen. Melted the paint off of the walls. And so we have a twofold problem. How do you fix a pipe under a kitchen floor that goes into a cafeteria that has asbestos flooring on it? Then when you do abate the floor, which we were going to do, and then trench it out, you have to abate pipe because the pipe's covered in asbestos. So we did the next best thing. We left it in place and repiped it. And we abandoned the old underground safe secured and put in new. So we took care of that. The other schools, we just noted, you know, some of the items that we've done. The Flaherty School, the new pizza oven in. So put a new pizza oven in at the Hollis School. And we actually did a portal rebuild here in this building in the winter. It was cold. You're not cold anymore.
Not right now, no.
I believe that the last item is 74 Pond Street. The launch program is housed in that building. We were in-house, we installed air conditioning throughout that building. There's another deal with the Green Community money. Almost made money installing this equipment. Yelled at to spend the money and move the project. The project cost us.
$90,000. We got about $85,000 rebates back. If you think about Beld in town gives rebates on heat pumps.
And.
This is a lot of scale.
So it was, we probably, this job would have cost close to $400,000. And again, we did it for 90, got about 85 back. So it's difficult to spend it, but it's a good problem. It's just, it's time consuming. And working on the next projects, we've looked at the school.
Yeah.
And I think Rob had some children in the school. That's how it got selected onto the list.
They also played at South Middle Basketball, so we refinished that floor.
So I don't know. Every time he gives me input, I think I'm being played. But he's doing a great job. And we're looking at this building as well, the Council on Aging and a few of the other town buildings. So we have a lot of projects that we're looking forward to doing. Some are projects that we're planning this year. We're looking at doing some floor tile removal at the Highlands. Probably do some ceiling tile replacement at the Morrison School. So we have a few projects lined up, and we're just going to keep going at it. Every day is an adventure. It's certainly not duff. So we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I will open it up to the committee. Questions?
I have a few comments.
Kevin?
I know you said that you took things over July 1st. Well, that's not exactly truthful. When we had some of the catastrophic roof failures, your gentlemen went to South and Ross and helped out. And I remember walking the hallways of the high school, trying to figure out what valves we were going to replace so that we could segment some of the water systems up there. And in looking at the old hot water heaters, yes, they were original. Paul Revere and Sons put something to that effect. But in knowing that the hot water system is now far different, they're able to put in these more efficient systems. These schools themselves, yes, they might be big boxes and things such as that, but the technology has, shall we say, doubled, quadrupled. And in the group to be able to assess this. Now personally, I think you need more than just one or two people. My humble opinion would be to double that, but there again, we have to work within the budgetary constraints. What I do, what I see here is the fact that every single time you've been asked to help with something, the switchgear your group was involved in, and the fact that you can bring not just your group, but inspectional services from the town and Beld and some of the other experts that can come in and truly save us with economy of scales and how we purchase things. It's, it's night and day. And I see the custodians buying into, some of them, when they were walking the halls of the high school, helped us find some of those valves that have been hidden for many, many years. And it's almost like a group is starting to conform here. We have the betterment of the buildings and therefore an environment that's better for our children. And all people are being realized with the fact you still have to maintain the other buildings also. So it's not just the schools, it's the other buildings. But we know that you've done lion's work and going, your own work as far as going after that years before and getting them to a point where they're doing preventive maintenance, not corrective maintenance. When something breaks, you're into corrective maintenance. And two pounds of cure is what you need rather than one ounce of prevention. And we're seeing that some of the systems have been neglected for decades. And sorry, Mike, we kind of handed it off to you, but I will say that you guys have carried the ball rather well. Two-way person, I see them all the time, working. I catch them working all the time. And they're a credit to not just, you know, helping out with the schools and the children and whatnot. And I think that comes from the top, all the way from yourself, all the way down to the newest guy you have. Can't thank you enough. You're doing a great job. And I look forward to seeing what we are like in another two or three years when we can actually do predictive maintenance, preventive maintenance, and really getting into that type of a program. Madam Chair, thank you for your indulgence.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Tuffy?
So looking at your total school facilities budget from FY21 to FY23, you see 32% and FY22 and FY23. We recently went before the Ways and Means. We, and this, I guess, will be considered by the Town Council tomorrow to approve a supplemental budget of $512,000. So it seems to me that these budget allotments were insufficient if you need to ask for a supplemental budget of half a million dollars in March of the year. I did go to the Ways and Means a couple of weeks ago, and, and it was stated that the Facilities Department's already spent 90% of its FY23 budget. And so hence the need for the supplemental so they can do more than just either salaries. They can actually do repairs as they come up. So have, are you submitting a more realistic proposal for FY24?
We are, but like every budget that is submitted, it's, it's gone through by the Ways and Means, and then we're set with a certain amount of money that we can increase. Now, we did our presentation. We explained to them that we were over. It was $500,000, mostly in utilities, I believe. So we will be addressing that in the new budget regarding the utility overrun.
So you're going to put in for a greater amount for FY24 that so that that's more realistic?
It'll be more reflective of what we're, what our goals are. It'll be more reflective of what we're, what our goals are, the department to operate.
Okay, um, so um. The water tank that was replaced at the high school, um, that was. The money was delegated for that earlier on, but you had to wait for the parts, is that correct? And and so that is this part of the supplemental budget to pay for that water tank?
Supplemental was, there was uh, monies put aside for repair work at the high school. It encompassed all sorts of projects that we were not involved with, but the money was used to pay for those projects, my understanding. We didn't, we weren't, we did not access that capital account for those repairs. It was spelled out that it was, I would assume there was some uh, other plumbing work that was done before we came on board. Uh, also, there was in that particular capital expense was uh, renovation of the media center. Uh, and furniture for that uh, area for the students, so uh, again. An elevator repair, which was expensive, uh, and it was around a hundred thousand dollars, which was all part of that capital expense, so. It was spent uh. It didn't get the monies to the water heater at the time. There were other expenses that had to be addressed. That took priority over it from our understanding, so that's the reason we had to ask for the supplemental.
Thanks, Captain Coven, appreciate it. Uh, appreciate the report. Definitely appreciate the open communication you guys have provided me over the past since you guys have taken over, you know, whenever I need to call. Mike or if I need anything, you guys are always open, Justin, Sam, Zola, thanks. So I appreciate that. Um, so we talked before, you know. Taking this over this project, I know Tom brought it up about kinda. It's gonna take a few years to kind of get where you want. Are there any other roadblocks you guys see right now? I know the budget and money is what everyone needs, but are there any other? Things that are kind of standing in your way that off the top of your head that you guys know are coming, where it's something where we can help out on our end?
No, um. The town side, so everyone understands, when we took over, it it was a five-year program. Um, so we're able to shift because we got the buildings in the town side operational and the mechanical systems working properly, updated. To the point where we understood how they worked and we could control them, which we don't have on the school side yet. So it's a long process. It's not something you can rush in there overnight and say, now I got control of your buildings. Every day changes. East Junior High, you would think is. State-of-the-art newest building. We have a lot more problems there than we do with most of our other schools. There's some issues with the rooftop units that I've been dealing with. There's some subcontractors that did work there that uh, was not done properly. And it's a continuous issue we're gonna have. Uh, it's gonna take some time. I can't guarantee you it's gonna be done next year. Uh, but we're gonna keep chipping away at it. We have implemented. A preventative maintenance program, which the town and the schools did not have. Um, we're actually have a person that's dedicated to checking all our filters, our uh. Fan belts, our motors, uh, greasing them, he goes to each of the buildings, uh. As soon as he turned on to the school, I haven't seen him in about four months, but I know he comes in the morning, says hello and all I say is what school and. Off he goes. Um, uh, Fern from uh, Bernstrom is his name and um. He's done a fantastic job for us. He's uh, been with us now a couple of years, uh, and uh, we're happy to have him. And this is part of growing, so we'll get control of these buildings. We'll eventually get better, we'll bring more people in. Um, it's a slow process. I like to do things quickly. We take care of the emergency uh, issues right away, obviously. Uh, this is something that we have to adopt and work on and that's where we're headed.
Thank you. Problem with repairs, they're unpredictable and they come at the most inopportune time, so. Had these things not broken down, you may need to ask for supplemental, but. It's hard to avoid replacing a hot water heater or a busted steam pipe, um, whatever else that may come down the road, so tomorrow. God forbid, something might happen in another school and more resources will need to be devoted to that, but it's unpredictable. We could go the next rest of this fiscal year without a problem, but who knows what's gonna happen in the next three months?
Anything else? Any other questions? Mike, of course.
Just a few uh, comments. Um, you know, Mike, I haven't seen you and you took over the schools, but uh. Uh, that goes a territory. Uh, I think that if you look at the collaboration, it's been great, um. You know, Superintendent Lee, uh, all the principals, which has been a really good um. Working relationship and getting things done and um. When I look at the Hollis uh, project, I went over there when they were, you know, on the process of of. The pipe in, having a little bit of an underst- understanding about steam lines and steam pipes. Uh, it was just an amazing, it was amazing how you how you guys came up with a plan. That was probably the most efficient way of doing it and didn't get any downtime and um. That was a a major, major repair. Um, and I I gave your crew a lot of credit for that. And just uh, all the number of eye here and feedback to the response time is great. So I I think that the collaboration of um. Town and school facilities coming together, studio services, et cetera, has been working really well and I think that um. You know, that comes with great leadership um, from you uh, and your team, while as our administration, I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have made. Um, and it's a great report and I'm sure that there'll be pages more. And you know, obviously, as we move down the line, uh, we will be, you know, increasing um. But I think that at this point, at least this collaboration shows the parents, students, teachers. And our community that we're committed uh, to fixing uh, our schools and I really appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Okay. I have a few questions, comments. Um, you've answered most of my questions, um, Mr. McCordy. Um, so there was obviously apprehension when we first, um, we're talking about merging back in uh, last spring. Um, one of the things obviously was a reg- like a regularly scheduled meeting. I know that you meet with the superintendent quite regularly, things get prioritized. Um, you know, there's a protocol for, as you described, um, notification and prioritization, so that's. I I feel comfortable, four hundred and twenty-four work orders is is uh astronomical. Um. You touched on whether or not you're hiring new people, because we had talked about that. We thought that you were gonna have to hire additional resources and you you've talked about. Potentially having to put that in your next budget. Um, I was looking for examples. You've given me a couple of examples of. Um, a lot of the discussion we had last year was. By having it done in-house as opposed to bringing in a third party, how much money it was gonna save us. So you've given us a couple of examples there, so I appreciate that. Um, it sounds like you've inventoried all the school equipment. You said that there were rug. You had shampooers or a rug and they weren't working and you fixed them and now we can do that. You've done the 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 gym floors. But it still seems like we're a little more reactive because the buildings are old and there's there's still gonna be things that come up that we don't expect. When we first started talking about this, we talked about assessing all the buildings. I know you've been extremely busy. But is there any plan to go through each one of the buildings and to create that, those assessments that we've been looking for?
Yes, we we do intend to get there. Uh, like Rob said, we really didn't get into the buildings till after Labor Day. Took care of the summer, we had projects to finish on the town side. Uh, doing the assessment is a priority, always was a priority, but we had so many issues with heating and and. So it works like this, that in July, our concern is heating. Because we gotta get ready and make sure our equipment, so you you're ahead of the season. And we knew we were in trouble in September, especially at the Hollis and Highlands School. Um. And it's a little nerve-wracking. Uh, we're meeting with Jim, he wants to know about his schools. He doesn't want excuses. We don't wanna give many and we can't make up a story. He's right through it. We just have to come straightforward, tell them what we gotta do and uh, and that's it. That's what we've done. The assessment portion. We've reached out to a couple consultants that uh, we've used in the past. The cost to get a simple Reader's Digest version is gonna run us about a hundred and fifty thousand. The problem is, we see that a hundred and fifty thousand every day. We know what that assessment is. We can pull one together and do the same thing and give. Us a list of priorities that we'd like to see in each of the buildings. I think we could do a better job in-house than bringing out an outside uh, group for the Reader's Digest version. In the long plan, maybe we we do that, but the short term, because budgeting is what it is. If we had a hundred and fifty thousand, I would advise getting another plumber, pipe fitter, HVAC tech. Which is more important right now than doing that assessment, because the assessment's gonna tell us that we're in. Dire need of upgrades, serious upgrades. Um, so to tell us something we already know we need and we don't have the money to fix it. But we'll spend the money that we could get a talented individual in here that would save us a couple hundred thousand. Is really the wiser choice to make at this point in the department's development. Um, because we could fix a lot more of the problems and we're gonna see a lot more of the problems. You put new newer steam boilers in half your schools. The piping's still a hundred years old. So every day we're getting a pipe leak and it's just a matter of time and that tomorrow will be another one, so. Uh, those we cannot avoid. Um, what took place and how we got to where we are now. Is really not something that we need to talk about. You know, here we are today, we're gonna move forward. We don't. Have to finger point, why did we put this boiler in there and that boiler over there? We've gotta work with what we have, we gotta make it better. And we will chip away at it. Like I said, the town took us five years to get, it took two years just to get a grip on the town buildings. We have a better staff, we have better people, that will get a better handle on this within the next year. Moving forward. So the assessment's nice, if we had the money. I would much rather have license plumber, pipe fitter, HVAC tech. And you know, we're we're looking as we go forward, we're gonna bring our own IT people in. These buildings are not just a thermostat anymore. You don't just come in and just, oh, I want heat, I turn it up. Uh, we're using the uh, building maintenance uh, management systems. Uh, we did it during that cold. Year of uh, snap that we had during the winter and we monitored the equipment in every school, every hour. We knew which buildings were going down, we knew which buildings were coming up online and we knew that we were gonna have a. Pipe freezer too, happened to be in one of our town buildings, but we knew it was coming because we knew our temperatures were coming down, so we were prepared for it. Uh, so we'll need IT people, uh, we'll have to spend some more money on our control systems. Uh, but as we stand right now, the money is better spent on personnel that can help us fix the problems we have on a day-to-day basis. Once we get control of these buildings and we have some kind of normalcy, if that's even possible. Uh, then we can look forward to doing a full assessment and where we wanna spend our money, but realistically, we're in the millions. You know, this is, you know, our, we're in the millions and it's a big, big number, so uh, it's nice to know it. But the reality is, are we gonna get it? Not this year. I don't uh, foresee.
I imagine the the principals and the custodians have a handle on what the issues are in each particular building. There any, is it, is it in facilities due? Like, is there some kind of place? Is there, is there some list or something per per building, the things that are being prioritized?
Unfortunately, what we had prior to uh, us coming on board, we had the uh, zero uh. Maintenance program in operation and that's right, so what we have now, we have, we have, we're getting a grip on it. We are going through the buildings, uh, it just takes time. We've been through most of them. We've been in most of the crawl spaces. We've been in places uh, that are not fun. We have gone through them. We know what we're looking at. We're not surprised by anything. There's very few places that we haven't been. We've been at the high school, we took lockers down, punched a hole in a wall. In a crypt that hadn't been open since it was blocked to fix a pipe that we found on a plan and we were able to get in there. Fix it, put the lockers back in place and you never knew we were in there. I mean, these are some of the the areas that we're working in daily, so. Uh, and then we still have our other buildings too, so um, and we're working as one group and uh. It, the schools have benefited greatly from bringing these us together, because we've been in the schools and we can't get out. It's like the Hotel California.
And I appreciate that, I really do. Any other comments, Mr. Devin?
Thanks for a second time. Um, I think it's important, the questions you just asked. Is when you get a true maintenance program. Now, before, what they've been doing is firefighting and you know, there's. Sigma Six and there's RCM two and quite a few of these different philosophies on how to maintain buildings and whatnot. And the fact that right now they're doing so many corrective uh, maintenance. Things and they're so far expensive because it's already broken and when you get to a point where you have a module where you're only doing maybe twenty. Twenty-five percent corrective maintenance issues and the rest is all predictive or preventive maintenance. You will see the money that you spend go down. You'll see uh, 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 the allocation of the people in the field. It changes too. That person that um, changes filters, greases uh, 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 machines, motors and whatnot and deals with fan belts and things like that. If you maintain them, there's there's so much easier to maintain than to try and replace. So what we're seeing now is we're having to through neglect and I I admire the fact that he doesn't wanna look back, he wants to look forward. He's got the professionals to be able to walk into the place. It's not hard for when I walk into this place and see things that don't work. You you hear it all the time when our steam over here doesn't work because the boiler we have here is new technology down in the basement. It doesn't exactly made up and they know these things, so I think it's astute by saying if we bring on. A professional plumber, pipe fitter slash person that knows how to, shall we say. Open up the PLCs on all the different um, 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 boilers we have. And know that, okay, some of them you have to operate there. A lot of them, you can do it from your laptop. So they're they're taking in information, putting it into those different, shall we say. Philosophies from corrective, which it's a firefighting deal, we've got something that's broken to preventive maintenance and hey. Again, doing the heat the summertime, AC in the wintertime, you hate to say it, but you're you're always that six-month chase. But in doing it that way, at some point in time, they'll get their arms around it. I think it's gonna take a little bit longer than the. Buildings on the town level because there's more of them, but it will wind up, shall we say, right now, the meter is kind of all over the place. It will find a medium and we will realize savings. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have confidence in that.
Yes.
Questions or comments from anybody? Thank you for your work. Thank you for this presentation. Hoping that you'll come back and present to us occasionally. Um, just on, you know, go ongoing status and how things are going and again, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
I appreciate you all being here, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Great, um, moving on to. FY twenty-four budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me get there, hold on. So not a lot new to report. Uh, last time we discussed the budget, uh, this is the slide that you saw. And today it is unchanged in terms of the conversations we had with Town Hall and the mayor. Uh, right now, we are still looking at a seven-point-five percent increase uh, for total budget of seventy-four million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine. Uh, obviously on the slide, you can see the impact of the consolidation of the facilities department with the town as five million went over to the town ledger. Uh, to to support the the work that Mike and uh, Rob just described to us. Uh, we see this as a level services budget uh, at the number that you see at the bottom of the screen. Uh, and we will continue to work with the mayor's office all the way to the finish line on this. We have a public hearing uh, next Tuesday, the eleventh. Um, and based on the results of that hearing, uh, we'd be looking for some type of vote on the April twenty-fourth meeting. Happy to answer any questions, but again, for the most part, the conversation is unchanged since the last pending edit.
Are there any questions on committee?
Good chair. Last meeting, I had to ask if we could do another line item that would show whatever it. To increase for staff and programs that we had cut in years past. Were you able to come up with anything for that or?
Uh, we're still working on that. Uh, it was a couple of years ago, obviously. Uh, the other piece of that that conversation, when we we bring you the information. Is that at this point, those would not be the priorities that we would have as in terms of what we would replace. Um, you know, COVID had an impact on a lot of the thinking, uh, those cuts were made prior to COVID, uh, but we will bring you that number.
Okay, or whatever, you know, um, positions or programs that you think if we, if we could have an increase, you know, what would those positions and programs look like if they're not reading and writing and literacy and, you know, maybe it would be adjusting councils or something like that, so if, if that could be prepared, I'd appreciate that.
Certainly, thank you.
Can you have that for the next meeting?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments about the budget? We're pretty confident we're staying at seven point five? Pretty confident we're staying at seven point five?
We're, we're working on it right now.
All right. No questions or comments from committee? Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I got a couple.
Mr. Devin.
Do.
Mr. Devin.
The maintenance of that, that seven point five, what encapsulates that number? Could that be, obviously we see where it's come with the improvement and all things that go with that. But we did get some money from the state. Didn't wait about one point seven to two million that the mayor's office went for opera money, I believe.
Good chair.
Yes.
Um, any money that we got reimbursement money that last year's allotment uh, through the county opera money has been um, has been pretty much uh, put into free cash and it's going to be used to help supplement this budget.
How does that mechanism work?
The application through opera is for reimbursement. So part of um, what we received was uh, revenue replacement, which was about seven hundred fifty thousand. And there was about two point one nine nine, was that the number? Close to two point two million that we used in Esser money last year to offset uh, some of the cost of the budget. So that Esser money is no longer available, so we need to cover that Esser money. So as we look through um, all of our revenue sources, when we come to the total cost of the budget, um, we will have to utilize uh, free cash in order to um, supplement uh, whatever is whatever we need to fund that is, that is part of the existing budget.
And with that being said, that Esser money, that came from like three years ago when we took something like four point two and we used it in one year and we said we'd take that money, not to use it all at once. And that money is being used this year, right? It's the last of the issue, right?
No, uh, Esser money was through the chair, Esser money was, final allotment was last year. Uh, we had a number of challenges, uh, I mean during COVID, you know, we, we had, we did not collect any um, any uh, full day kindergarten fees that cost us about a million dollars. We used Esser money for that, there was seven to eight hundred thousand that was used to buy air purification systems, air purifiers. Um, so I mean, there's a number of things. The first allotment of Esser money came with uh, many restrictions, it had to be COVID-related. And then after that, um, the second and third um, uh, groupings of money uh, could be used uh, towards budget, so all, all of the money for Esser, I think it was about six million, right, total?
More than that, as you can see up on the screen, uh, FY twenty-two, we used three point three million dollars of Esser money as a one-time offset. And then in the current year, FY twenty-three, you can see it's two point two million. Uh, it's, it's our remainder of Esser money plus some circuit breaker money that we had saved.
I was wondering, because I know that we were thinking of using that in one year, and I believe your brother was on the finance committee chair at the time and said, what do you say we use half now and push that forward so that we wouldn't drop off a cliff?
Right.
Right. That's very good planning.
Thank you.
So the seven point five is opera money as well as um, like a four point, did we say four point two percent increase?
Uh, it, it's four point two, which is kind of our annual rollover with respect to contracts and, and fixed costs. Uh, and then embedded in it is also two point two million that the town will now provide to the school system that we utilize one-time money for in the current year.
That's where we get to the seven point five, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Great, thank you. Um, moving on. The transportation fees.
Uh, just to bring us back to where the last conversation ended, uh, we are proposing charging all students that we are legally allowed to charge for transportation, uh, excluding kindergarten. Uh, the fee would be a flat one hundred and eighty with a family cap of three hundred and sixty dollars, that is up from existing two fifty. Um, all students living within two miles of their school under this model would have to pay the hundred and eighty dollar fee. Um, you know, for kindergarten kids who are beyond two, kindergarten, I'm sorry, elementary kids beyond two miles, they would not have to pay the fee. However, all, all students grade seven through twelve would have to pay the fee regardless of the distance because we do not legally have to transport them. So we anticipate this would increase our revenues, uh, you know, when um, Mr. McGordy was talking about the increase in cost of fuel and things like that, this would help us offset those additional costs. We anticipate we could bring in additional revenue uh, up to about two hundred thousand dollars under this model. And then in the sheet that was in your last packet, we had shown you uh, some of the other communities around us and the fees that they're charging. Um, you can see that our fee would be a little low in the middle of the pack, there are a couple of school systems that do not charge a fee. Uh, but there are multiple communities around us that charge a significantly higher fee.
As you said, this is the second reading, the finance and operations subcommittee moved this forward to the full committee with uh, unanimous recommendation. And again, this two hundred thousand dollars is no, no way, shape or form, gonna um, pay for everything that we need, but it certainly will help.
Good question, Madam Chair.
This stuffy.
Mr. Lee, could you um, do you know how much additional uh, funds uh, the school department needed for a school, for fuel, for school buses this year? You know, with the price fluctuating so much.
I believe we were short about eighty-five thousand, um, but we also have increased costs in terms of drivers and monitors and things of that nature as well.
So this, so this proposal will, would
Cover those costs.
Push in for uh, if, if we have another spike in fuel prices next year.
Any other questions from the committee? No? Would someone like to make motion?
Make motion, I'll second it.
I have a mo- motion by Mr. Lynch and a second by Mr. Devin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you all. Uh, moving on. School building committee update.
Uh, I have some updates, uh, Doug Murray was unable to be here tonight, uh, so he had sent me some notes, uh, just to update the committee in terms of where we stand at South. Update on the building is that it is still on schedule and under budget. They're doing exterior wrapping, uh, they should be completed within the next couple of weeks. They've started to finish floor tile on the second floor. Uh, and exterior lighting has also begun and they'll begin pouring sidewalks this week, so they are still moving along with great rapidity, uh, and we are looking forward to seeing the building open up on time. Along the same lines and, and I apologize, I meant to bring it up when Mr. McGordy was here. Uh, in, as Mr. McGordy indicated, we meet every Thursday uh, with, with his whole group. And we have been talking uh, a great deal more recently about uh, the Old South building. The timeline of new cells as it relates to our ability to have early elementary center open in September. Uh, one of the issues in Old South that needs to be addressed is its asbestos abatement that requires the use of outside vendors. The scheduling of those vendors and conversation with Mr. McGordy is a little too tight for both our comfort. Uh, so I am recommending to the committee that we postpone the opening of the early elementary center to the following September to give our facilities department sufficient time to get in there, do it right, get it all done, have the school looking the way we want it to look for kindergarten and preschool students and reducing the anxiety of every single parent with a kid under the age of six. So that'd be my recommendation, um, they are prepared to move in that direction, um, and I would ask for your support in that.
Any discussion or questions on that, Mr. Devin?
Abaintments, um, we know that we had a pretty big number, it was a hundred and eighty-two thousand to be able to, shall we say, render it so there would be useful for the young children.
Abatement to?
Well, we know that most abatement companies hit shock full of work in the summertime, so we're going to try and, shall we say, jam ourselves into the queue in a very short period of time. We know that they probably have most of their work on their books now, if they didn't have them several months ago. So trying to squeeze in there, we will not realize, shall we say, a, a, a good number when it comes to that, for one. But two, the fact that uh, Mr. McGordy and his group saved us money when they were allowed time to be able to do it on quote-unquote their schedule. Um, I've talked to him about, you know, certain things he can do on the plumbing side to be able to save some money where you don't rip the walls apart, things such as that, so. I believe by giving it that year, it, it, shall we say, will allow us to save some money on that and render the building by benefit of what the uses that may need, not just for the younger children, the year pre-K and K, but all other members of the community, because it'll wind up being a community center like all of our schools. So it'll be, I think you'll get a better product by giving that type of time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Devin. Any other questions or comments? I, I would agree as well, you know, given the facilities enough time to do what they need to do. Retro, there was some plumbing retrofitting that we were talking about, I'm sure there's some painting, there'll be some other things. Handrails or a bunch of things that we discussed to make it to retrofit it for this, for the smaller children. So I would agree as well that it makes sense to uh, postponing fall of twenty-four. And also give everybody um, ample notice so that they know wherever, have, have we notified whether that we're going to go to, were we waiting for this decision to notify kindergarten parents for twenty-three?
Yes, because uh, as I said, Mr. McGordy and myself, we meet every single Thursday, this has been the topic of conversation for months. Um, you know, when he got to a point where he couldn't with a hundred percent confidence say that timing wasn't going to be tight when we got to that place. You know, he and I both agreed that it was in the best interest of everybody to put it off for another year. You know, the last thing we wanted to do is have last-minute details being done at a school where young children are going to walk in with families dropping off students for the first time. Uh, we want it to go well, and if the time allows us to do it that way, I think the time is well spent.
Couldn't agree more. Um, so yeah, so I think that's a, that's a, an excellent decision. Um, how soon will you be notifying parents, kindergarten parents tomorrow? Excellent, as to whether or not they'll be going to Manadequay or homeschool.
Uh, that, that piece might be a little bit longer, what, what we'll introduce tomorrow is the concept that we are going to pu- push off for a year.
Okay.
Uh, and we'll continue with our normal process for kindergarten placements. So we will be running, uh, you know, obviously a number of uh, classrooms over at Manadequay, but the homeschools will come back into play and we'll begin to work out those details as we normally would.
Okay, so not even just notifying parents, but also staff and?
I think the anxiety right now is, are we going to South or am I going something else? And so to answer that question with some finale.
For twenty-three and we'll make the change in twenty-four.
Yeah.
Great.
Sure.
Make the first.
I think um, it, it makes sense and there's so many other moving parts here.
Right.
We have a school that we're most likely going to rent, we have uh, potential of you leaving this beautiful building.
Right.
Um, and uh, and you know, what we're going to do up at the high school, we're working on that, there's some conversations this week, so. Um, it makes sense to do it right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, do we need, we don't need a motion or anything, that's just a decision, we're making a decision.
If your folks are supportive, I think that we'll just keep moving along.
I believe we are supportive.
Um, so to bring it back to Doug, I gave you the update on South, uh, the roofs, uh, we have work that is beginning to come together as far as the Hollis and Flaherty roofs. Um, at Hollis, young developers is the roofer that is going to be assigned to the task. Um, they are having a project kickoff meeting this Friday, so they're up and running. Over at Flaherty is Titan Roofing, that is the roofing contractor. Um, they're already beginning to, to work uh, in that neighborhood around schedule and what it will look like, and they have a kickoff meeting tomorrow at eleven, so. Uh, over the course of the summer, we have multiple roofs going on our elementary schools that should be ready to go by the start of school in September, which will be a huge upgrade for those facilities.
And Liberty and Flaherty?
Liberty, Highlands, Flaherty, Hollis.
Great.
New cells.
The cells for the roofs.
Oh yeah, that's. But.
Any questions on the school building committee update?
I got a couple of comments.
Mr. Devin.
Um, probably every other week or every two weeks I go up and I walk the site itself with the um, the gentleman who is the um, superintendent for Agastya.
The South site?
Yes. Um, in the forty years I've been involved with construction, all different types, I've never seen a job site so clean. Usually you'll see scraps of wood, shall we say, pieces of cement off of the side, which is a danger. Uh, walk through every cubby hole in the place, the coordination's there. Um, they're being told to work neatly and, and they're adhering to that. Um, like I said before, I've, I've never seen a job site so clean. You, you see usually pieces of tie wire or something to that effect. You walk in, everything is set up on, shall we say, benches that people work off of. Um, you see all the different safety rails and whatnot, so safety's not being, shall we say, neglected. We know that how it was designed as far as the wall system in the gyms, that number twelve bar that's six inches on center, I don't know how they did the masonry around it, but they did it. Um, and you just see the little things and I'm always impressed with it and the fact that they are pouring sidewalks, looking at getting curvings in, so. Cautiously optimistic, you know, and we've heard people say about the switchgear and things like that. And well, it winds up being the quote-unquote buzzword because it was a problem at the high school. But I, I, I'm hearing that the contractors don't, don't see that. So, I mean, and it is a quality job we're getting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I said one question, the module classroom that Mr. McGordy spoke about, that's at Flaherty but not attached yet to Flaherty, is that dependent on the roof? The roof is done?
Well, it, it really is dependent upon, they need to be able to lay a foundation um, and get that work accomplished before they can actually settle the, the units on there. The roof obviously prevents any work from occurring until it's over. And so, you know, when we get to the fall, I think we'll have a more clear timeline in terms of when that will go on.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the school building? No, thank you, Mr. Lee. Uh, moving on to student representative update.
Um, I'll go first.
No.
Um, obviously this week is really busy for everyone, especially the students over at the high school. Um, term three is ending this Thursday, so everyone is just kind of in that last final stretch, especially the seniors, it's our last like full-length term. Um, and especially with spring sports, we'll let you guys know last time that they started. Um, and this week is marking really most sports first games, first meets. Um, so everyone's really like full speed ahead. Um, on a different note, the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, um, that group that I've been working with and I helped found, I also serve as the vice chairperson of. Um, we're holding a conference this Saturday um, for student representatives, both continuing student representatives and new ones, because at some schools, they do their student representatives in the spring before. Um, and some schools are even already in their election process. Um, so we're just focusing on our conference this weekend on kind of training these new representatives, helping continuing representatives kind of bring voice of their student body to their committee um, and improve the idea of a student representative overall, so I look forward to updating you guys at our next meeting about how that conference goes. Um, and that's pretty much all I have, but you raised that way a lot.
Yes, speaking of conferences, this past Thursday, a couple of representatives, maybe five or six from Braintree High, attended a conference on Kick Butts Day at the State House with the eighty-four movement, which is about preventing tobacco and nicotine use in youth, and it was a really great conference. We had, I personally went and we had a couple of people from each grade level go with the Braintree Community Partnership, and we got to talk to our state representatives and senators about just our perspective, what we see in the schools and how we as students think that we can come together and build more community and prevent this use in the future. And then also on Saturday, another peer of mine and I, as well as one teacher from the Braintree High School, attended the MIT K Climate Action Through Education Conference, where we got to talk about um, youth initiatives for climate change and use some technology models that they're building to kind of see what, if we did this with the policy or we did this with uh, collective public initiatives, how we could prevent the global temperature from rising, which was really cool and was a great networking experience for a lot of students to come together, feel energized, motivated. And then also on a different note, invitations for the Spanish and French National Honor Societies just came out, so a lot of people are also alongside regular NHS excited for that and the bi-literacy language testing is also continuing.
I'll start off with our fourth conference of the update. Uh, Model UN is having a conference at Concord Academy also on Saturday, April the eighth. Uh, very exciting event, it's our third of the year, we are sending about twelve students, so it's going to be Uh, very exciting event, it's our third of the year, we are sending about 12 students, so it's gonna be awesome. Uh, just like, go express ourselves. Um, next, Interact Club is this week sorting clothes for a clothes drive that they run every year. The American Legion Boys and Girls State applicants, uh, have been, uh, given out, so those of us who got in are very excited for that. Coming up are our foreign language and history trips, uh, for April break. So again, very excited to get out of here.
Game of theater.
And, um, lastly, our, uh, our club day, uh, or our, our whole pride rally went very well, especially the, um, the club showcase part of it. I ran one personally and it went well, lots of interest from students about joining new clubs and we're excited to see some students getting involved with the school community.
Excellent. That was my question, school committee representatives for next year, when is, when is that decided? When do people apply?
We haven't been told. Yeah, it came on around May last year.
Okay.
Today was for Juber's Day.
Oh, yeah. And I want to encourage those of you who want seniors to reapply please. Okay, thank you. And then the senior countdown, when does that go up?
Um, I'm not sure when it goes up.
Days, do you have it in your head, how many days till you're, uh, you're free? Just wondering.
It, I'm excited, but I'm also like, weird to think about, like after the past like crazy years, the fact that it's like finally over. And April's gonna fly by with the
It always does, yeah, yeah. It's exciting, it's an exciting time. Okay, thank you all for your updates, Ms. Sowers.
Thank you, I can't tell you how glad I am to see you guys back to normal. It is like difference from three and a half years ago, heartbreaking to see what you guys went through in high school, I can't imagine, you guys are very resilient. Amazing, amazing. Um, as one of the founding members of the Brain School Safety Advocacy Group, I'd like to take a minute to acknowledge yet another school shooting in our country. The only country with this chronic problem. While we mourn the loss of yet more children and educators this time in Nashville, it reminds us that there is more work to do to protect our children at school. While we impatiently wait for action on the national level, the school committee can and is taking action here in Braintree. Our advocacy group has partnered with the Braintree Police to do what we can to prevent a tragedy here. I have the utmost confidence in the BP Day. They are very well trained and ready to respond in a timely fashion and at all costs. We as an advocacy group and a school committee have brought in additional security experts to help. We prioritize recommended physical security improvements and that have started implementation of those measures in all 10 school buildings. Thank you to Mayor Kokoros and, and Braintree voters who authorized this 1 million security project. Last week it was voted, or two weeks ago, sorry, in to move forward on adding alarmed and key card access at every entry in all the buildings. We've also set in a, set up an anonymous tip line, the Sandy Ho Promise Anonymous Reporting System to any student, parent or faculty member listening. If you see or hear something, say something. Please use this tip line, it is 100% anonymous. You are our first line of defense in preventing a tragedy here in Braintree. But there is more work to be done, our advocacy group will be looking to this committee to vet, approve and fund additional prevention methods. Some ideas our group has generated include additional mental health resources to our students, a social inclusion education program, townwide gun safety awareness, constant upgrading of emergency training and preparedness for school staff, improved cell phone service in all buildings and go buckets for a classroom for a PMS. We as a community need to do everything we can to protect our children and staff. I look forward to updating you on the group's progress and bringing more ideas to the committee for consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sowers. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, Policy and Education Subcommittee update.
Thank you, um, we have uh, several policies that are up for second reading and are approval today, the policy and sub, policy, Subcommittee met on March 30th. The first of those policies is consideration of using the DESI model for superintendent evaluation. Uh, Mr. Lee shared with Policy Subcommittee to Dr. Hackett's 2018 summative evaluation. Uh, and it was, it was the DESI group, right? So, so, um, I think that having this uh, policy available to Subcommittee members, if most of us that were not part of that previous evaluation sub-cycle is helpful. And the, the Policy Subcommittee, um, after speaking with the chair, has proposed that the DESI format for superintendent evaluation be used in this evaluation cycle, beginning with the self-assessment and goal setting by Mr. Lee in May and concluding with a summative evaluation held at a public hearing during the second meeting of September 2023. Are there any questions or?
I also said that I had a little cheat sheet that I will share with the committee as well.
So I'd like to make a motion that we, um, accept the, um, second reading for the consideration of the DESI mod- model for the superintendent evaluation, the revised concussion policy.
Are you, are you gonna talk about all of them? Do you want to do all the policies or you want to make one motion for all?
I'll make one motion.
All right, did you want to?
I have something to say about the facilities.
All right, well, why don't you summarize and then we can do one motion for all?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so the consideration of the revised concussion policy also is the second reading, um, that uh, we discussed at the last meeting. And then three, uh, facilities, policies that, um, that were, we brought up, IFA Facilities Development Goals. Um, Mr. Devon, um, wanted us to check the Braintree Charter and looking at, uh, Braintree Charter, section four or five, number three, uh, that, um, that says the school committee shall have general charge and superintendence of all school buildings and grounds and shall furnish all school buildings with proper fixtures, furniture and equipment. Um, and it also goes on to provide, to, uh, note that there can be a central, uh, facilities department, which we
We've established it.
So, so I think that that address that your concern, Mr. Devon, for that policy. And the, uh, other concern he had was that he felt that there should be some reference to the facilities department in policy FA, so, um, I would propose that on the last paragraph. Recognizing that school facilities are long-term community investments, the committee will, and then we would add in the words collaborate with the, um, Town's Facility Department to develop projects that like cost-effective designs are consistent with good engineering practice, et cetera, so I would add in the words. Add in the words. School Facilities Department or Town's Facilities.
I think this was Infinity is a great way to put it, that's general.
And I'm sorry, where, where were you suggesting you put that?
Look at, look at the third paragraph, after the word will on the first line.
Will develop projects, yeah.
Committee will, and the words collaborate with Town's Facility Department too, so
To develop projects that reflect, okay.
Yeah.
So recognize that school facilities are long-term commit, community investments. The committee will, the committee will collaborate with facilities to develop projects that reflect cost-effective designs?
Yeah, collaborate with the facilities department.
Yep, with facilities department, okay, okay. So that amendment, okay.
Okay, and the, um, next policy that we discussed was, um, uh, policy of Steve retirement of facilities and, um, and Mr. Devon mentioned that, uh, we had, uh, done this before uh, when Aldridge and Foster Elementary Schools were just, they were declared surplus buildings by the school committee, which effectively relinquishes school school committee control and allows it to be sold or reused for another purpose, so that would this is, this is really just a boilerplate, plate, uh, policy from MASC that would, uh, allow us to retire, reuse, manatequid school or Coburn, whatever, whatever. School.
Right, what we did with Foster and Eldridge is we declared, the school committee declared, um, the buildings as surplus. And then in turn, the town council has to vote that they're also surplus and then they're turned over to the town and they become town facilities, they're no longer school facilities.
Yeah.
Mr. Devon?
A point of information, Madam Chair, one of the reasons why this is so important is we do partner with the MSBA.
Yes.
The MSBA will look at any and all inventories and what they'll look and say, if it's still a school and it has not been properly surplused and under the control of the town. They can look at some of your SOIs and say, I'm sorry, you've got these elementary schools, you know they're no longer schools. If they're not surplus properly, they will look to you and say, develop those, and I believe that happened to us once before.
So this call, this
This is a boil of plate.
This is a boil plate, it just, just talks about the process of, um, deciding what to do with the older older building and involving the community and, you know, discussion. And finally, the last one, um, that we discussed was naming, renaming facilities, which will be, which is on the horizon for us. That is, um, uh, policy FF, we had a policy, um, that in our handbook, in our manual, but it did not really address renaming buildings and it focused mostly on, uh, the uh, process for naming a building after, or a part of a building after an individual, so this, this, um, revision, uh, consolidates the MASC policy and the Braintree policy of, um, into one.
Any questions on that policy? I think that was a good merge, the two. Okay. Oh, those are all the policies, would you like to make a motion?
I will, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the following policy, uh, after the second reading, consideration of using DESI model for superintendent evaluation, consideration of a revised concussion policy, policy FA Facilities Development, policy retirement of facilities and policy FF naming facilities.
I'll look at that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mr. Mayor and a second by Mr. Devon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
And, uh, we on the agenda, there is a duration of first reading for approval of MASC policies for section E and, uh, LCPS, but, uh, this Subcommittee decided we needed more information on those and so those, the consideration has been, uh, tabled for now.
Okay.
Our next meeting is going to be on April 27th at 5:00 PM at Coburn.
Great. Okay, thank you. Um, Finance and Operations Subcommittee update, we discussed the budget, which we've already gone over tonight. Um, we also met on March 30th at 6:00 PM. And then we also went into executive session to discuss, um, the collective bargaining updates on negotiations with the BEA. Um, and our next meeting is on 27th at 6 o'clock, right after policy and ed.
Well, I have.
Um, our next meeting will be April 11th, as we've said repeatedly, that is a public hearing of the budget. And on April 24th, we will, uh, vote on the budget and move it forward to the mayor and the town council. Um, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon, second by Ms. Sowers, Mr. Devon?
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Ms. Sowers?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch? And the chair votes aye, we are adjourned, thank you all. Okay.